All right, I'm gonna call the regular council meetings July twenty fourth to order. Mr. Becker, can you please?
Everyone please rise, Mr. Becker, read the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll take roll call. Councilperson Bradley? Councilperson Kemfer? Councilperson Gennaro? Councilperson Becker?
I'm here.
Councilperson Fisher? Councilperson Schornberg?
Absent.
Councilperson Winkelman? Councilperson Massa? I'll entertain a motion to approve our agenda for the council meeting, July twenty fourth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
I have a motion and second, any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, has the agenda been posted, dated, and signed? Thank you, ma'am. Give you a minute to look over the minutes. And I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from our last council meeting on June twenty-sixth.
I'll move to approve the minutes from June twenty-sixth.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Oh, any dis- yeah, go ahead.
So, on the second page, check register and bills. Counting Fisher made a motion and the counting Fisher also seconded that motion.
Good point.
The way we were, it was pretty good better than Tony's.
Yeah.
Newspeaker editor, good job.
Yeah, good job. That works out, that's why you're here.
He's been correcting me for years.
Well, that's all right. With that correction, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Public comment, we had none. Check register and bills, go ahead and flip to that.
I'll make a motion to approve the check register and bills as presented, and only comment that I wanted to make is the use tax was thirty thousand dollars this month.
That's correct, yeah, the use tax is really coming up.
Which I suspect is probably, uh, there's certain businesses that may only file quarterly or after they've hit a certain threshold, so that's probably, to be, some fluctuation is probably to be expected.
Yes, yeah, we're headed in, we're heading in the right direction on that aspect of it, and, uh, with the use tax, Mr. Becker recommended, which I agree, we take an average to see because each, you know, the month before, I think it was thirteen, and this month, I mean, there's such a large span, we can't go month to month, but we just need to, you know, average quarterly and then yearly and see what we have, so that's where we're at, so I have a motion. And a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Committee reports are in your packet. Public Works. Public Works did a good job on, uh, grabbing up brush after our storm, doing things like that, did nice there. Mr. Attorney, you have anything to add on top of your packet?
Uh, I do, and Jack, I, uh, too, but, uh, John Rainey and Austin and them have been really going after it at the Girl Scout House. Uh, they really knocked out a lot of big stuff, and I think we're right at twenty-five hundred dollars in material, not including the AC furnace units, and those guys were really took a major financial burden on the city and the, the surface side, so I just want to say John Rainey has done a really good job down there.
Yeah, I stopped in there.
You guys been doing stuff, and I seen I come in this morning and dropped some stuff off at Clayton.
Okay, thank you. Um, anybody have any questions for Mr. Attorney? Chief Pope has in the packet as well, had a total of forty-four calls, always busy, doing a great job. Mr. Sullivan, do you have anything to add outside of your packet? Okay.
Robert, could I call attention to the, uh, meeting that you came with me to last Tuesday? Uh, so the, uh, some of you may remember that, uh, several years ago, I started something with, uh, several other city council people and aldermen from around the county called the Jefferson County Municipal League. Last month's topic was, or this month's topic, last week's, was, uh, getting the, some building officials together from some of those various cities, and trying to see if we can either, uh, standardize processes, maybe get on the same or similar version of a building code, uh, so that a contractor doesn't have to remember what city they're in when they're trying to figure out how to wire an electric socket or something. So there was some, as you can imagine, everybody's got different opinions on how to do things like that, but there was some discussion about at least starting a monthly get-together of the building officials, so you can kind of start working toward that. Is there anything you wanted to add there?
Uh, yes, as far as, uh, being everybody together, they, uh, correspond with all those folks, uh, somewhere at the meeting somewhere. Um, so it looks like starting in September, uh, because everybody's trying to cycle through vacations, so starting in September, we're gonna meet at least once a month to start going down that road, see if we can get everybody on board to do something like that, because I, I think it's, uh, vitally important, it's just a matter of getting everybody on that same page, with each municipality may want different things in and out of the code, and as long as those don't get too long, I think we can accomplish that.
It would have some other benefits about, for instance, if an inspector is on vacation or has an extended illness or something like that, another city's official can fill in and things like that, and it'd be helpful in the event of a big storm, which has happened before.
I think it's a good idea. Good, thank you. All right. Moving on to the police department, Chief Helm's, information is in there. Captain Purnell, you have anything to add on?
Uh, no, uh, the mayor had a discussion today, uh, about vehicles that are not properly registered or expired tags. Uh, I know probably each one of the council people here that you guys get, uh, probably contacting calls, because a lot of times we're sending, putting tow tags on trailers, uh, different things, usually what we try to do is we try to work with the citizens, um, as their, their, the place they're inspired, we try to give them some warning, sometimes they have, there's usually just not one resolution, like you look by ourselves, we had nothing to do, we're not messing with, we try to address those issues. Uh, we don't want to put a financial burden on anybody, so we try to work with them, we make contact. That's general idea with how that kind of works, that we see them sitting there, and sometimes a little longer, to put longer tags on them. And they could have got tickets too, but we try to work, like, we try to work with them, so you can just, if there's issues, just give us home, we'll try to, you have to take care of it, so.
Where you send letters and tow?
We don't, well, we'll send, we don't send letters, hey, we're doing those tasks, uh, the chief and I have discussed sending out a thing at the beginning of the year, we talked to Jason about it, saying, you know, this girl's here, coming, trying to clean up, you know, because there's a lot, I mean, the vacuum looks a lot better now, but as soon as you get one moved, and those will pop up, we just got one down, and we dropped a maple wheel, bringing it to Ellen, like, there's never any process of keeping the streets clean, but, uh, yeah, we normally, we will stick a tow tag if we make, if, we make efforts first, and if we make no effort, or if we get no response, then we put the tow tag, and maybe we'll get a call, saying, hey, I'm gonna have the, have the news, the, the little letter, sometimes we'll print out, like, our ordinance, and we'll stick them on their windows or their doors, I think one of the kids, the people we had problems with a lot was up there by the high school, that car kept parking across the.
Oh, the sidewalk.
Sidewalk, and I think we had numerous calls, and we told them, and then, then they moved it, and then for some reason, they wanted to stick it back there, I mean, the law's never changed, but they wanted to stick it back there, so we had to go up there and say, listen, you can't just figure, like, it's not, it's not thick for the kids to walk out into the street. But she understood, and she got fixed, so.
No.
Anyway, just, if you guys need things, if you need anything, call us.
Thank you. I appreciate that, thank you. All right, moves us on to council liaison reports. Mr. Fisher for the library? All right, um, their website, they have like an owl showing or something like that, I, they've already done it once, but it's coming up, I think the twenty-ninth or something, so. Uh, park board, Ms. Schornberg's absent, um, the park is now taking credit cards, so it's kind of a moving in the right direction, just they can accept deposits over the phone, things of that nature, so they're not just coming dealing with cash and stuff like that, so that's, that's going really well. Um, Mr. Shelly, you've seen back there, he's worked really hard on getting the Hickey White plans going, and, uh, he dropped off some plans to me this week, so Hickey White has blueprints, and they are going to start, uh, moving forward on that, so that's going in a good, good, uh, position. And, uh, planning and zoning, Mr. Becker?
Uh, I believe there's, uh.
Multiple items on the, uh, agenda for ordinances this evening related, well, I guess there's one related to planning and zoning.
Yeah, one.
Uh, anything else you wanted to add, Robert?
Um, as far as the meeting, the meeting being, uh, moved to the first, uh, Thursday now, uh, but nothing is on the agenda at this point in time.
Okay.
Are the deadlines changing for that, or, I forget, we discussed whether or not we would need to move the, because typically, if you had something in by the last day of the month, that would be on the P and Z agenda, that may not give enough time to post.
Yeah, so, so the reason for the change is so that, um, when an item goes to planning and zoning, that we have enough time to get to the next council meeting at the end of the month. Only two months out of the year, that, that won't allow part, just because they're shorter days, but every other month out of the year, we'll be able to have a P and Z item, have a review of P and Z, and still mean the posting days, uh, if it's required to be posted for a public hearing, we can have the public hearing on that same month, rather than wait another month and then have the public hearing.
Okay.
Good.
And, yeah, that works. I thought you were asking the deadline to put it on the P and Z, the.
That is what I was asking, actually, but.
So, do we have a deadline, but our deadline used to be P and Z was at the end of the month, well, that gives you three, four working days to get it, is that, do we need to adjust those times?
Yeah, I mean, e- essentially, um, as long as we're, we like to get it out a week ahead of time, so I'd say we need at least five days.
Five business days.
For the meeting, so that we can have something, you know, we'd like to have our meeting on the south.
All right.
Five days ahead of time if possible.
We should probably post that or put it on the website someplace, once we figure out what the.
Yes, one thing that's officially in there, it was just left open, so now that we got that set, we can change that.
Yeah, and just make sure those changes are on the website, somewhere they can get them. Perfect. Good catch, Mr. Becker. Uh, zoning appeals, Mr. Gennaro?
I'm not aware of any upcoming meetings, unless Mr. Sullivan knows of anything else.
No, no, nothing has been brought to my attention this time.
Okay.
And levy commission, Mr. Kemfer? All righty. Public response, does anyone in the audience wish to speak on anything related to the previous council meeting, June twenty-sixth? Please stand. All right, moving on, old business, we have none. Uh, new business, the Iguana's Mexican Restaurant Bar and Grill liquor license, they're the ones that were just a little bit late from the last one, so I believe that's in your packet. I'll entertain a motion to approve the liquor license for the renewal for Iguana's Mexican Restaurant Bar and Grill.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, ordinances and resolutions, we'll run this a tad bit different here, just because there's a couple of things, um. Mr. Sullivan, our first ordinance is ordinance nineteen thirteen dash twenty twenty-three, it's our chapter eleven, the erosion and sediment control stormwater, this thing. I was just gonna let him discuss it real quick, and then we'll run through just like normal, how we normally do it, so this is the only thing that's a little bit different. Take the floor, sir.
Good evening, Councilman, Councilman, um, this chapter eleven is a new chapter, uh, in our ordinance, um, related to, as the, the mayor said, the erosion and sediment control stormwater management design manual. This document, uh, it's ended up being like eighty-seven pages long, I know it's an awful big document, um, this is basically Jefferson County stormwater control. We are under, as a co-perity, the MS four program, which is their stormwater, um, division, we're under their permit, we're the state reserve, as a co-perity. Crystal City, as a co-perity, has to have a stormwater man. State guidelines and requirements, so there was, you know, when they're hearing big tweaks and reference everything to, uh, Crystal City and to things out that doesn't necessarily apply to us, but doesn't take us out of meeting the state requirements. So, um, I'm asking that we create this chapter, uh, at the tonight, and so that we can, this is one major part of coming into compliance with our audit.
Right, uh, I emailed you the council, the DNR report on that, and, uh, this is one of the major sticking points that we should have had, so. All right, with that, thanks, sir. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to read bill nineteen thirteen dash twenty twenty-three on its first reading by title only.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion with that, just being said, any questions?
Uh, question from Brandon, since he's here, sorry. Uh, is chapter eleven a, a Jefferson County number, or is that the number that it will be in ours? Okay.
Also, so this is the design manual, is there also a management plan that's separate from the design manual, or is the design manual the?
Well, some of this is, some of this is both, but then we'll have to, um, really need to have to have a consultant, a PE, a registered PE, to create our actual management plan.
Okay.
So it'll be, that'll come later, at a later time, even though that's part of satisfying the state requirements for the audit, we're gonna need some time to create that. That's not something that we just copy somebody else's, because it's definitely specific to your community.
Okay.
So, we'll have to create that, because that has everything to do with our city facilities and management of those facilities for our stormwater control team.
Okay.
So, that'll have to be very specific, so we'll have to have that done by a licensed PE.
Okay, and that's, I just want to understand that, this is the design manual, is what we're accepting?
This is more of our, um, stormwater design and controls for development.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, everything from a, a single lot development like Culvers, so Culvers was over an acre, so they had to have a land disturbance for net, so they would have fell under this. Um, you know, you go and build a, a new house on a lot that's under an acre, that doesn't, none of that, none of this applies.
Mm-hmm, but you're gonna develop a subdi- or minor subdivision.
Or a large piece of property, that, that would apply.
Okay.
Um, just something that just came up, that won't necessarily happen to projects that are already, so they, they still have to meet the state's requirements, but not, not ours related.
Okay, thank you.
And then, uh, one other question for Robert, um, how much of this, because I, I just saw, saw this this evening, I believe you that it, we need to adopt it, but how much of this applies retroactively to existing homes that, because like, uh, Mike was saying earlier, we don't wanna, the goal is compliance, the goal is not to impose a financial hardship on people that, to go back and do something that wasn't the rules before.
Correct, this is only gonna apply, um, to those that come forward and do new projects, and so like, let's say you have a, a house on a five-acre lot, and you decide you're gonna do, um, a big parking lot and a huge garage for a bunch of automobile storage. While that may be allowed, there's gonna be some stormwater stuff that you would have to deal with, that you wouldn't have to dealt with before, you can't just dump the water toward your neighbor and, and not account for that.
Right.
Not that that's gonna be a huge deal for that kind of development, it's, it's more along the lines of, uh, all parking lot spaces. And then go and try and deal with something that somebody developed before and has a lot of stormwater runoff, but that doesn't apply to what we're doing.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, I had a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have the first reading of bill nineteen thirteen dash twenty twenty-three by title only, please?
I'll move to adopt bill nineteen thirteen dash twenty twenty-three in its first reading.
A motion has been made and seconded to accept bill nineteen thirteen dash twenty twenty-three on its first reading by title only. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Um, do you guys want to pass this a second time this evening, or you want a chance to read through it first?
I would prefer it passed, but I mean, it's.
Realistically, we're not gonna make any changes to it, but.
No, we're not, but it's the county.
It's still not adopted by other municipalities, and we're trying to standardize that, so I, I'm okay accepting it as it.
I'll move to read bill nineteen thirteen dash twenty twenty-three on its second reading by title only.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have a second and final reading of bill nineteen thirteen dash twenty twenty-three by title only, please?
I'll move to adopt bill nineteen thirteen dash twenty twenty-three in its second and final reading.
All right, a motion has been made and seconded to approve bill nineteen thirteen dash twenty twenty-three on its second and final reading by title only. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. I'll poll the council, councilperson Bradley? Councilperson Kemfer? Councilperson Gennaro? Councilperson Becker?
Yes.
Councilperson Fisher? Councilperson Winkelman? Councilperson Massa? Bill number nineteen thirteen dash twenty twenty-three now becomes ordinance nineteen thirteen dash twenty twenty-three, is that correct, Madam Clerk? Thank you, ma'am. All right, uh, our next one is ordinance nineteen fourteen dash twenty twenty-three. Um, I'll entertain a motion to read bill nineteen fourteen dash twenty twenty-three on its first reading by title only.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on that one?
Is everybody familiar with what this consists of and?
We talked about it on P and, well, with P and Z, this has been two months ago, I guess.
Yeah.
On, on this one, go ahead, Mr. Becker, I'll move that over.
The, uh, briefly, the idea is that for simple lot subdivisions that do not require the creation of new infrastructure, uh, new water lines, new roadways, things like that, if you're just taking one lot and turning it into two or three or four, and, uh, I believe there's an upper limit on the number of acres, uh, ten lots, yeah. Um, this creates a simplified process that, uh, avoids, uh, the two rounds of coming back to the council that we used to have, or hopefully we used to have.
Yeah, and they can join it, take it apart, I mean, it's just a quick thing, it still has to have his approval, if it has to have new infrastructure, it raises, and they have to do it the old way and everything like that, so it's, it just streamlines things for the, the contractors.
But if it can save sixty or ninety days off a project, that's a big deal.
Absolutely, we're just trying to streamline things.
Or, or if somebody, for instance, um, had built their shed ten years ago, or their garage ten years ago, uh, five foot over on somebody's property line, and they want to get that straightened out before they sell their property, as long as that lot that is being taken away from still is meeting the requirements of a, of a proved lot in that zoning district, we can move that line, we can create that line now without having to go through two council meetings and a full-blown subdivision overview. We can just come to our office, still has to have a flat done and, and all those other requirements, but you don't have to go through the two council meetings and have a preliminary flat, a final flat, and all of those things.
Yeah.
And get it done for.
Just streamlines everything for this whole process, perfect. Uh, did I have a second on that?
Yes.
I did, all right, perfect. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have the first reading of bill nineteen fourteen dash twenty twenty-three?
I'll move to accept bill nineteen fourteen dash twenty twenty-three on its first reading.
A motion's been made and seconded to accept bill nineteen fourteen dash twenty twenty-three on its first reading by title only. Any discussion? All. Our title numbers aren't.
Right, they should be sixty-two and sixty-two, sixty-two, one fifty-three, and sixty-two, one fifty-four, according to the body of the document.
I heard that whenever she was reading it, I was.
Sixty-two, one fifty-four, that's correct.
Yeah.
It's what it says in, uh, section two of the ordinance, that's just in the title, that, that is.
She could get those corrections on that. All right. A motion's been made and seconded to accept bill nineteen fourteen dash twenty twenty-three on its first reading. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
I'll move to read bill nineteen fourteen dash twenty twenty-three on its second reading by title only.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have the second and final reading of bill nineteen fourteen dash twenty twenty-three?
Bill number nineteen fifteen dash twenty twenty-three on its first reading by title only. In accordance with the city's principles, the city is providing for the addition of chapter eighty, article section sixty-two dash one fifty-one, and sixty-two dash one fifty-two. Now, there's minor subdivisions and moderate settlements in section sixty-two dash one fifty-three, and sixty-two dash one fifty-four, in accordance with the boundary adjustment and lapse and validation of the code of ordinance of the city of Crystal City.
I'll move to approve Bill nineteen fourteen dash twenty twenty-three with the correction to the title number and its previous discussion.
Second.
Any opposed? Hearing non-motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have the second and final rea-, oh, that was it. We're good. I'm sorry. Those got me. I'll poll the council. Councilperson Bradley?
Yes.
Councilperson Kemfer?
Yes.
Councilperson Ginevra?
Yes.
Councilperson Becker?
Yes.
Councilperson Fisher?
Yes.
Councilperson Winkelman?
Yes.
Councilperson Massa. All right. Bill number nineteen fourteen dash twenty twenty-three now becomes ordinance nineteen fourteen twenty twenty-three. Is that correct, Madam Clerk? Perfect. All righty. Uh, next one is nineteen fifteen, ordinance authorizing, uh, LOI, or not LOI, I'm sorry, authorizing the mayor, my coach, to enter into intergovernmental agreement.
This one takes two attorneys. This must be good.
This one does. I'm going to have Brandon explain, or a city attorney, explain what's going on there.
So, if I was to, if I'm not messing with the second attorney here, and I'm not getting charged, right, we should hear, because she's been a lot behind the scenes for her, because she's a story attorney with our firm. Uh, she's Caitlin Vanover. Um, she's been with us, basketball, soccer, with us, for, for years now. Uh, past far, and she's a full-blown attorney for, uh, several months now. So, she does a lot of work for me behind the scenes. She's been down here and meeting with us on a lot of the Hardy aspects, and some of the other day-to-day stuff. I'm going to hear more and more. That's who she is. So, uh, happy to have her here and happy to have her in the city. So, this agreement that is in front of you is, I'm not sure, is intergovernmental agreement between the city of Crystal City and this government's authority. And the purpose of this agreement is to help administer some of the funds that will be utilized to build and construct some of the roadways that will support the Hardy plant that will be coming to us here hopefully very shortly. Uh, so, if you remember, the, the county has appropriated about seven point two five million dollars from their marco funds to be utilized for the roadwork for Hardy. That roadwork includes an upgrade of Airport Road, rebuilding BFW Drive, connecting the plant to Calvary Church Road, and then eventually connecting the Calvary Church Road down to Catalake. And a price of more than that, about seven point two eight million dollars. So, we got a pot of about fourteen point five million dollars utilized for all those roadway works. I think I've covered everything. There's no way I can cover everything. But it's keep in mind the development agreement that the city executed with the developer and the county, and some of the other just went to these caps of the city's obligation to that fourteen point five million, as long as that funding is still available too. So, it's not likely to go away at the city's account for fourteen point five. However, the city is not the sponsor of the governor's cost share application and is not in control of the county's arco funds, counties. So, we have to come up with a way for the city to utilize those funds for roads that'll be utilized in the city and for projects that will be in Crystal City. So, that is what is in front of you, is just a framework of a deal between the county and the city to utilize those funds that will be allocated towards the Hardy roads. So, the way that's going to work is the county is basically paying, playing the bank here, and the city will play project manager for, they put a role of constructing those roadways. So, not exactly where the city wants to be playing that role. I'm going to handle that part of it. The development agreement, yeah, the development agreement actually calls for a project manager to either be hired or be appointed by the city. Uh, there is how there is in Sean Parks that I'm looking to call him. That's Sean. He's going to be there as their project manager for this part.
The city asks to hire somebody. Can we pay them out of these funds?
There is some, uh, there is some lion's in there for work and project management as well. Now, the caveat to these funds is they cannot at least from the governor's cost share program fund the use for engineering costs, which is interesting. Um, so, all of those costs are inclusive. That fourteen point five, the way we wrote it in the development agreement, is inclusive of engineering. We're going to be borrowing using those funding. Now, the big catch to this is, is the state says, okay, county, you want our governor's cost share funds? That's fine. But we're going to transfer Calvary Church Road over to the county for your obligation. The county says, okay, city, you want our seven point two five million dollars from our, we're going to transfer Calvary Church Road to the city. So, now, we don't want to be responsible for it either. So, Calvary Church Road, at the end of the day, will be a city roadway. And there's, there's no other way around it in order to get these funds allocated for this project. Now, keep in mind, we do not have a specific obligation set forth in the... I'm more visual, so it makes more sense for me to look at this map to determine where that roadway is going to be. But leave the map term...
I think the maps, maps were more compelling in color.
Yeah.
It's in color, though. So, if you want to, if you want to circulate this, so, Calvary Church Road is actually outlined on here, uh, starting right beneath Airport Roads. That would be right here. And then Hardy's Road doesn't connect until up here in this area, right here, where the circle would be. And then that's where the bridge would be. So, this whole section right here would be the only thing that would be utilized by Hardy. But that's roadway.
Is this bridge in charge?
That bridge is non-existent right now. Yeah, that's the bridge that has to be there up here. That would connect Calvary Church and Catalake together to get them their access on my way.
Okay.
Okay. They have to come to the table because the city ain't going to have, there were sort of billions of dollars to repair that roadway at Hardy's torn up. So, the hope is we get everybody to the table again and have a real, you know, point of justice about how we're going to take that roadway. Because it's not going to happen from, from the city's perspective.
In, in this agreement, though, it's just Calvary Church Road that we're, we're not talking about the bridge, taking ownership, or anything of that. We're not, just to the bridge at the bottom of the hill, basically, from...
The way that it's rising in the agreement is from the thousand of Airport Roads and the MoDOT obligation of, of Calvary Church Roads, which ends, literally just ends.
Yeah, that almanь's field there.
At the end of that roadway.
It does.
County Road right now?
It's a MoDOT road.
We, we plow, because we have residents in the church. We plow in Springs, Kedazoo, already, and occasionally back roads. The only thing we don't provide structure up there is the church on both those places and their own.
I was going to say, we didn't really, we maintained it and stuff up until we started looking. I was like, oh, it's a MoDOT road. They, we didn't, didn't know it anyway.
We're not being a bad figure, so we put them out there. It's MoDOT catch with our money. They, you can have the money, but we don't want that road anymore. Which, I get it. I mean, they're going to pay the improvement, but once they're done with it, they're done with it.
No, I get it. I mean, it's...
But if the road was then maintaining, so are they.
Well, I mean, they're maintaining it, but it hasn't, hasn't...
It's just ownership still, right?
Yeah. I mean, it's, I, I did talk to Jason about this. Um, this kind of came together fairly quickly, I think, Thursday, when we had the agreement hammered out. It's the first, you probably have seen it, isn't it? Really, it happened quickly. I mean, we probably had that agreement only about ten days before that tried hammering out with the county. Uh, Jason's idealized was the agreement for this proposal. He thinks that Calvary Church won't be an issue with the way that it's going to be utilized and how it's going to be, uh, utilized for the project moving forward. So, that was, that was my biggest concern, is the council going to divide this with that being the caveat that we have to use currently.
Oh, was that...
I don't know how much is contemplated on Calvary Church going north or south.
It's just the program.
Because there, there's not supposed to be any access from Calvary Church moving south until you reach Hardy's access. And that, that strip should really be not utilized, um, other than just traffic flowing through there. Now, the reality is, is it going to be used? I'm not quite sure. I mean, there's going to be trucks that turn off of there, and deliveries or something go down the wrong way. So, it's not utilized, but it's a good question. I don't know how much time to play with that.
I mean, I just get all the way to Airport Road.
All right.
So, I guess the biggest, the biggest thing that we're going to have with this agreement is really determining if those costs are applicable with those programs. Because now the city is going to also be obligating itself to the agreement that the county has to execute with the state to receive the funds. So, the, the state requires, and you've seen this before on some of the other projects, where you get state or federal funds to do some roadwork, you have to execute an agreement with the state in order to receive those funds, saying you comply with all the authority laws, and the, the bidding process, and the wage hourly, you know, provisions for your contractors that are involved. So, that's exactly what the county has to do.
Eight and twelve inches of concrete. I don't have anything on Calvary Church.
South access to Calvary Church included in the plan, and the plan doesn't have any, any roadwork included for that strip between Airport Road and Hardy's access road.
Yeah, it is beautiful, yeah.
I've been hiding out it. Fourteen point five isn't going to cover what they need covered anyway. But, I mean, we can certainly get it out in our, our view to see if that gets included in the, the project cost, but that's going to be one of the first things that will be decided.
Well, I'm just like with a, a Airport Road, not a lot, no truck traffic on there. So, if you're right, we should get truck traffic over there.
And not supposed to be. Supposed to be employees, to my knowledge.
I mean, if they use it, start using it then, we got a real problem. We didn't plan for that. That was not what we planned for. And Airport Road's supposed to be used for employee traffic and delivery drones, you know. I mean, it's, it's going to get some heavy trucks on it, but no.
Three hundred fifty employees.
I mean, you're going to get more traffic on that road than you want to deliver.
Right.
Right.
That's, that's the plan.
Same.
So, that's the, that's the basics of that plan here tonight. Now, this is, I hate to put this in critical status, but it kind of is in critical status. So, the council needs to take some action this evening on this, to give a document. The county can't get the money until they have the agreement executed with the state, because the county won't execute it due to the state until the city executes this agreement for us to obligate ourselves to the cost share agreement in Calvary Church. So, it's all one big entanglement here, but it's...
This is the first step from our end.
It's a very good topic to ask.
It's a, it's, yeah. It's necessary, and it's a good, a good issue. So, all right. I'll entertain a motion to rebuild nineteen fifteen dash twenty twenty-three on its first reading by title only.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing non-motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have the first reading of Bill nineteen fifteen dash twenty twenty-three by title only, please?
Bill number nineteen fifteen dash twenty twenty-three on its first reading by title only. In accordance with the city's principles, the city is providing for the addition of chapter eighty, article section sixty-two, one fifty-one, and sixty-two dash one fifty-two. Now, there's minor subdivisions and moderate settlements in section sixty-two dash one fifty-three, and sixty-two dash one fifty-four, in accordance with the boundary adjustment and lapse and validation of the code of ordinance of the city of Crystal City.
I'll move to approve Bill nineteen fourteen dash twenty twenty-three with the correction to the title number and its previous discussion.
Any opposed? Hearing non-motion carries. I'll poll the council. Councilperson Bradley?
Yes.
Councilperson Kemfer?
Yes.
Councilperson Ginevra?
Yes.
Councilperson Becker?
Yes.
Councilperson Fisher?
Yes.
Councilperson Winkelman?
Yes.
Councilperson Massa. Bill number nineteen fifteen dash twenty twenty-three now becomes ordinance nineteen fifteen dash twenty twenty-three. Is that correct, Madam Clerk? All right. Uh, the last one, Brandon, you want to add anything? I mean, I can, it's our resolution, uh, three twenty twenty-three. We discussed it briefly last time. It's...
Yeah, I brought it up at the last meeting. Uh, so, the LOI at the time was Jefferson County Public Sewer District to move forward with a potential sale of sewer plant infrastructure to them. Uh, there was, they claimed there was an error in the exclusivity part of the LOI, which allowed exclusive negotiations with the sewer district up until July, uh, or July thirty-one, at the end of this month, potentially. Uh, we left it in there because that's the way it was presented to us. They felt it should have been commensurate with the closing date, potentially, which would have brought it into December, which is fine by all the parties involved, because they're just now doing their due diligence. Danny and I just got a request for thousands of records that they're looking for as far as their due diligence today. So, it makes sense to, to extend that, but that would mean that our exclusivity of negotiating with Justice Sewer District would be until December, rather than the end of July, which means we couldn't entertain any of our offers until that December. Which should give the sewer district a chance to actually do their homework.
Well, like you said, we noticed it last time, but the sewer commission had already approved it in that form, so we went ahead and did it.
Frankly, Jefferson County did as well. You know, we just left it as it is, thinking it was finished, but the sewer district is pushing for us to have that exclusivity to be extended.
A motion has been made and seconded to accept Bill nineteen fifteen dash twenty twenty-three on its first reading by title only. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
I move to read Bill nineteen fifteen dash twenty twenty-three on its second reading by title only.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have the second and final reading of Bill nineteen fifteen dash twenty twenty-three by title only, please? Thank you.
I move to accept Bill nineteen fifteen dash twenty twenty-three on its second and final reading.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve Bill nineteen fifteen dash twenty twenty-three on its second and final reading by title only. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. I'll poll the council. Councilperson Bradley?
Yes.
Councilperson Kimfer?
Yes.
Councilperson Ginever?
Yes.
Councilperson Becker?
Yes.
Councilperson Fisher?
Yes.
Councilperson Winkelman?
Yes.
Councilperson Massa. Bill number nineteen fifteen dash twenty twenty-three now becomes ordinance nineteen fifteen dash twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-three. Is that correct, Madam Clerk? All right. Uh, the last one, Brandon, you wanna add anything? I mean, I can, it's our resolution, uh, three twenty twenty-three. We discussed it briefly last time. It's.
Yeah, I brought it up at the last meeting. Uh, so the L O I at the time was Jefferson County, so the sewer district to move forward with a potential sale of sewer plant infrastructure to them. Uh, there was, they claimed there was an error in the exclusivity part of the L O I, which allowed exclusive negotiations with the sewer district up until July, uh, thirty, July thirty-one, at the end of this month potentially. Uh, we left it in there because that's the way it was presented to us. They felt it should've been commensurate with the closing date potentially, which would've brought it into December, which is fine by all the parties involved, because they're just now doing their due diligence. Danny and I just got a request for thousand records that they're looking for as far as their due diligence today. So it makes sense to, to extend that, but that would mean that our exclusivity of negotiating with Justice Sewer District would be until December, rather than the end of July, which means we couldn't entertain any other offers until that December. Which would give the sewer district a chance to actually do their homework.
Well, like you said, we noticed it last time, but the sewer commission had already approved it in that form, so we went ahead and did it.
Right, we, Jefferson County did as well. So we discussed it as is, thinking it was an issue, but the sewer district is pushing for how that exclusivity day extended, which makes sense.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to read Resolution three dash twenty twenty-three by title only.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have the resolution read? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution three dash twenty twenty-three. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'll poll the council. Councilperson Bradley? I don't poll the council on resolutions? Oh. I, I don't have to have it read once. On a. Oh. Okay, but I don't. I did last time. I just didn't, I mean, if you don't normally on resolutions, then we can just do, perfect. All right. Let me go back. No, it's okay. Any opposed? I just ran through that real quick. Hearing none, motion carries. All right, we'll move on. City administrators report. None.
Did that updated L O I? You have the updated one through signature.
Uh, yeah, I normally sign them after the meeting. Do you need it?
I just didn't know.
Are you taking that with you?
Uh, no, I could have it.
Okay.
How far down the road before we can start negotiating for, on, off of sale, as far as what we want? And don't want, yeah, more interesting than, uh, rate hikes, I know, uh, than two years, but after two years. They gotta do capital improvements, three years down the road, four years down the road, and we see a twenty percent hike.
Well, that's, that's the point of this due diligence phase right now, is to gather as much information as we can as far as the capital costs that are gonna be needed in the future. Because that'll project for us what rate hikes are gonna look like, so, um, yeah, I mean, that's, we're still in that phase here. I mean, you're probably not looking until late fall before we really start getting information as far as.
It's, I have a question. I get them to sign off, but hey, we don't want ten years.
Well, this is fine.
We don't want any more than two.
This is a fine, okay? This is just a starting point for negotiations. This is not a contract, so the final agreements are still yet to come. And that's when we hammer down what we're looking for and what we wanna negotiate that.
This just lets them look and get our information and, and then, no, you're absolutely right, because that's, you brought that up to me before the meeting and that's, that's absolutely right. Yeah.
And we just did our final inspection, walked through on our pump around, so we're sure this, yeah, this is a nice presentation of everything that's wrong with the plant. So hopefully next month, we'll have a big old long list of how much money it's gonna cost to get us, put those new pumps in there, in there.
So we'll have an update next week, or next month? Okay. All right. Uh. Ooh. All right. Uh, mayor's report, city admin, obviously Jason's gone. He will be back. Um, he should've sent an email back. He will be back in the office August seventh is when he will be back. So, mayor's report, uh, I'm going to present Mr. Becker with his flat, if we can go down there.
Let me, uh, Mr. Becker has twelve years of service with the city and, um, has worked amazing for the city, I mean, but this government has done for the city with behind the doors. It is, he's spent a lot of time, and it's my honor to give it to him. Yeah, absolutely. And, uh. Um, he always rely on him for a lot of things, and, uh, how he's gonna go, and he had great art on the paper, um, if you guys didn't read it, I think you should. And, uh, it is a good process. He turned his letter in to me today, uh, over Wednesday, I believe. And, uh, so, once that all takes place, then we'll, I'll make recommendations.
Brandon told me there was no hard and fast rule on exactly when I had to resign, but I figured if I'm changing my voter registration, I'm not, that was important.
Um, we're gonna run through another like five minutes, we'll be at cake and soda, and just about fifteen, twenty minutes after our meeting to, uh.
Oh, just a couple of things. Uh, I wanted to expand on what Dan mentioned earlier about, uh, the help with the Girl Scout house. Um, John's been incredible. Yeah, he does. Yeah, uh, it's great that, I, I really appreciate that he works for our city now, because he gets a lot done. Uh, yeah, he, he tore up a lot of stuff and repaired a lot of stuff in just a really short amount of time. Um, and it's, and it's coming along. Um, it's been a, kind of a long slog, but it's, uh, it, I, I think you can kind of see a vision that's, that's starting to take shape, so that's good. And I wanted to say goodbye to Tony. Tony's, uh, just to reiterate to what Mike said, he's been invaluable and we really counted on him for a lot of things. I really don't know how we're gonna replace him, but, uh, just, it's kinda sorry to see you go, Tony. That's all I gotta say.
Mr. Becker.
Uh, just thanks for one last chance to wear the jersey before I retire it and put it in the shadow box and, uh.
Absolutely.
Uh, I forgot to mention the staff. Thanks also to the staff and all the employees of the city. I think we have great, uh, great employees and great people working for us. And of course, uh, it's not like I'm gonna die or anything. I'm gonna be right across the road, so if you guys need anything, just come over and knock on the door. Thanks.
Tony, does a new person get your chair? Finance, uh?
I don't know. It, it depends on how, how you guys choose to do it.
As appointing, so, yeah, so state statue is, the person assumes those. The only thing I will ask for is a new mayor pro temp. Just, we'll have to vote on that. Um, but they will assume that position when I appoint, but then we can re, I, I gotta double check, and I'll have to ask Brandon on that. Can we re, reappoint council chairs? Yeah, reassign, because it's, it says in June by state statue, but I don't know if it's, I say state statue. I don't know if it's our ordinance or.
Well, I know the statute does provide that upon resignation, the new council person would assume those roles and those duties of, of the seat.
No.
So as far as a reassignment goes, I haven't looked at that. I don't, I don't see why you couldn't.
Okay.
Uh, but it's something that we'll have to, we'll have to look at and get your answer on.
I looked as far as you did on that. So I knew they assumed the, but the mayor pro temp, I knew we were gonna redo that and then go from there, but.
Look both ways when you cross the street until next month, when you get a new pro temp.
Perfect. Mr. Fisher?
Uh, I, I would like to, uh, thank Tony for everything. Since I came on council, I can tell you that anytime I had a question, people, Tony and I shared the same ward, uh, people would call me up and probably eighty or ninety percent of the time, I'd say, I'll get back to you on that. And I'd call Tony and say, how's this work? So, uh, yeah, I, I will definitely miss him, and thank you so much for, you know, being, uh, aware of everything and, and willing to share your knowledge and help out. It's been a huge help to me.
Happy to.
Mr. Winkelman? Ms. Massa? Yeah, uh, and again, I can't thank you enough. He, he has a, his own written policy of whenever he would see Brandon's car, he would come over and, uh, he.
Hey, it works.
It works. And, and the thing is, it was, he did so much behind the scenes that, uh, he will truly be missed. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned. There is cake and soda back there, and we can talk with Mr. Becker for as long as he has time. Yeah, it's normally the opposite.
All right. Who you gotta recog- recommend? So I'm Mary, Mary Shawnberg, great.
For who? Finance? Oh.
That's where it works, isn't it?